Wake up your board.
All right, so I think, yes, we are recording, yes. Call the meeting to order. Let's do a quick round of introductions. Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Dave Shepherd, Commissioner.
Rosio Munoz, Benton County Health.
April Holland, Health Department.
Bailey Payne, Community Development.
Sean Gordon, Board of Commissioners Office.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Rachel McInney, County Administrator.
And elected officials online that would like to introduce themselves.
Jeff Van Marstel, Benton County Sheriff.
And we have some elected officials in the audience. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Brian Hossel, District Attorney.
Welcome, everyone. Good morning. All right, we will now review and approve the agenda. I believe there is one item to add to the agenda, and we are going to add that under New Business. It's going to be item 524. And that will be a letter of support, consideration of a letter of support for Senate Bill 564. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. And the announcements. All right. Let's get into discussion topics. First up, item 4.1, our Regional Sustainable Materials Management Plan. And on here, I have Sean Maguire.
Excellent.
Please kick it off.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I have Bailey Payne here with me to answer any specific questions on the solid waste aspect. So I want to give a brief status update on the Regional Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force, where we are and where we're headed. This might be a little more brief than 15 minutes, only because we are right on the edge of all the subcommittees meeting. Next time might be a little bit more, so we'll be able to have a little more meat to discuss and to look forward on. So I wanted to start. The Regional Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force was convened to explore regional solutions to promote sustainable materials management and to proactively address our regional solid waste management system. That was a little reading off there, because I'm working with Ann on nice, tight messaging, so sorry about that. So far, the task force has met three times, although December was more of a check-in since it was during the holidays. The reason this one is brief is we have four subcommittees. We have one on food and organics, and make sure I get everything, food and organics, built environment, products and packaging, and regional solid waste management. We already have members identified in each of those subcommittees. Right now, we're scheduling those for one meeting later this month, one early in March, all in preparation for the March full task force meeting that will be held in Salem. Processes, the subcommittees will discuss the more details and topics, then go to the task force to get additional feedback, perspectives, and recommendations moving forward. We have a couple of things with each subcommittee. The task is to identify three to five topics. I mean, there's everything under the sun when you start talking about built environment and food and these things. But what can really be done moving on from July 1st? What's either already in the queue at the state level, legislative, those things? And then, what kind of tools are we going to do to be moving forward? So each one has that, and they also have a matrix of questions that was discussed at our last task force meeting, looking at things like environmental justice, equity, economic development opportunities, where the market is, assessments, and how to actually move these things forward. Want to comment on two things. One, we use this word "plan" a lot. It is my own special four-letter word, because everyone has a different identification of what a plan is. This is really identifying and developing a springboard for July 1st to see where we can go. We are not going to say we can't do it in four months, so we just want to make sure expectations are set. But what it is, is to see where can we go in a myriad different ways. We're already, some of the partners we're talking with, the Governor's Office, DEQ, specific state legislators, including Fink McDonald, and the Environmental Caucus is on the task force, AOC and League of Cities, county elected staff officials, and industry experts. So when we start to pull together and aggregate this brain trust, where could we go that would be most effective in the short term? So really, the plan is going to be, what can we do on July 1st in the subtopic areas? So just want to make sure that there's no expectation that we're going to have everything figured out. So I think that when we, at the end of all of this, will be an assessment of where we are, but also legislative opportunities, budget opportunities, local policy. Zoning is going to be a critical issue. How do all the community development offices in our region work together, if at all? So, and also intergovernmental, because we don't control Corvallis, Marriott doesn't control Salem. How is that going to work out if we're going to be looking at long-term systemic change? So those are just some of the fun questions we're going to be asking. Did you, from your perspective?
No, I think the committees are pretty strong. We have great membership within it, and there seems to be a lot of enthusiasm, so that's good.
The only sub, one specific topic, and thank you, Commissioner, for commenting. There was an article about Polk County looking and starting to move forward with their transfer station. That's not the only conversations going on. It is our hope that the subcommittee on our regional solid waste will start to look at that more explicitly, and to see how the different counties can work together, whether that's Millersburg, whether that's Polk, or how, we don't have a transfer station. Where's that $50 million coming from? If we started today, we already shared with all, that's a five-to-seven-year process. If you said yes, right this second. So 10 years is going to be here tomorrow, and so that's what we're trying to do with this task force. Conversations?
Comments? Discussion? Other subpoenas?
Okay.
Do you want to switch?
I'm on the work group. I guess one concern is, had a pretty good conversation with the Polk County Commissioner yesterday about their potential transfer station to Rickoryall, Dairy, Highway 22, and 99, close to transportation. I have a feeling they're headed in that direction as a county. I don't, doesn't seem like there's any regional thought going, flowing into this. If that's correct, that's a concern. But we're, they're seeing often meets limited lifespan, and well, we need to do something about it. We're a year or two into this process. I'm not sure how long this is going, but they had a, Polk County had a land use hearing last night. My understanding is there's different, for the site they're talking about, there's different zones. Some might be exclusive farm use, some industrial. I don't know all the details, but they're going to have a series of public hearings. But I think have a fair amount of momentum on this project, and I think Frank Polk, Commissioner Polk, is their representative to the SMNB. Has he been very active?
I don't know if he's an active person, but we did interview him in the summer, so he's aware of these things. I didn't know if you wanted to respond on the specifics of Polk?
Yeah, it's, from what I've heard, the, they're looking at other municipalities in the area to try and get flow control, which would require that those municipalities bring their waste to that transfer station. Without that, I think they're probably going to have a hard time in commit pencil out.
And if I can, that's in the specifics of Polk. When we did our interviews, the two things that came out, one, some counties aren't even talking to each other, which is a little surprising, when we went through this all summer long. But then others are having conversations behind. And so, neither that's a bad thing, but as you just said, we need to start looking at this more proactively upfront. So that was the intent of bringing together that one subcommittee, the regional solid waste. So and we're really fortunate to have Lincoln County now part of that subcommittee, so now we have the coast. Those are the two counties that really need to embrace, we don't know what they're going to be doing when Corvallis shuts down.
Lincoln and Tillamook.
Yes.
That was my other concern, because at our last meeting, I think they had one, the coast had one nonprofit person who I don't think knew she was representing two counties in the coastal effort.
We had a great conversation with Jessie afterwards. I think it was more of a, looky around the room, oh wait, I'm the only coastal person, as opposed to I'm the official Tillamook County representative. She has great insight on what possibilities are, and not just a transfer station, but something broader. But we're excited to get that.
Great.
Other counties' questions?
Quick, maybe Commissioner's.
It's not four months, it's four and a half.
I apologize. I'll keep every day, every day counts.
For the record. All right, with that, we can move on to item 4.2, Courageous Conversation Training Overview. And we have with us April Holland and Rosio Munoz. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I'll just have a few words to share before asking Rosio to provide an introduction to the Courageous Conversation Training. So we're here to talk to you today, a training opportunity that Health Services is undertaking. I just want to state that equity is a value that can coexist with changing federal requirements. And so we are moving forward with this, this training. We serve all members of our community, all members of our community. And equity work has many components. You know, you can look at policy, you can work at, look at operations, at access, and starting with individual awareness and providing tools to navigate from our own lenses is a foundation upon which we can build. So Rosio, our resident expert, and I think the person who has attended more Courageous Conversation Training than, than anyone in Health Services, maybe all of us combined, can provide an overview of what to expect should the Commissioners be able to attend this training.
Thank you, April, and thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everyone. My name is Rosio, as previously mentioned. I guess I'll just provide you a little bit of background of how I, how I encountered this training. Through the Health Department and our Public Health Division, I was assigned to work and start a new project at Garfield Elementary School, as having a co-placed Public Health Representative embedded within the school system. It was our community health worker model, where public health would go and meet communities where they were at. And so I was at Garfield Elementary School as their School Health Navigator. It was a partnership with the Corvallis School District, that program still exists, where we have co-placed Public Health or Health Services staff members in Garfield, Linus Polly, and Lincoln Elementary School, Linus Polly Middle School. The Corvallis School District has, had embarked on a journey of their own to really look internally of what they needed to do to continue to embrace the work that they were doing around equity and inclusion. And being one, at the time, one of 13 school districts nationwide that had K-12, that has K-12 dual-language immersion program, they felt that it was a priority to really start thinking about themselves and the actions that they took to best engage and be responsive to their communities. So I actually, I had the opportunity to go this, to this two-day training that was hosted by the Corvallis School District. They were on a, their goal was to make sure that all of their existing staff members underwent this two-day workshop. So they contracted with Courageous Conversation. They are, they own the rights to their curriculum, they developed the curriculum, so they were able to bring them over, I think twice a year for the, for their first five years, working to onboard all of their staff. And so I was part of that cohort. And it really was, the content of the training, I would say it's more like a conference. When you go to a two- or three-day conference somewhere, where you can go to different breakout sessions, and you learn, and you, you network, it was very similar in that sense. It was really more about engaging with yourself and engaging how you perceive the people around you. So the, sorry, the title Courageous Conversation is really that. It's really a toolkit. It's a protocol that, that they use to engage in a conversation that's productive, that's solution-oriented, that's respectful, and essentially, it's in the word "that's courageous." Sometimes we are afraid, we don't know how to ask a question. We, when we, sometimes we're even afraid to say specific terms, because we don't want to disrespect somebody. And so we don't want to be in a place where it might be awkward for oneself. And so this two-day training, or conference, or workshop, it really provides oneself the tools to be able to engage in conversations that might make you uncomfortable if you don't have the tool, the right tools to be able to engage. So it's really empowering to, and very transformative for an individual. Now, as a person of color myself, I have felt this to be very trauma-informed, kind of, you know, really kind of therapeutic, in a sense, because it provided me with the background to understand why people around me have, have either reacted a specific way, or they asked specific questions, and they gave me the tools to be courageous and have or engage in that conversation. And rather than coming from a place of, I would say, maybe, maybe, I don't know, like just from a place of maybe not wanting to overshare, to a place where I was comfortable in interacting with my peers. So I actually, I was so, I was so authentically engaged in that conversation that I went again. I asked for the Corvallis School District to allow me to go again, and I began to kind of spread the word internally at the Health Department, just because I, I just felt that there was a lot here. And so, and it was, they talk a lot about, there's, the conversation leads with race. So, but there are so many different components around that, and it really shows the, the audience, how even our general society, how commercials, how, how infrastructures were built with specific community in mind. And that's what we need to change, because our demographics are changing. All of our, the Corvallis School District, and I feel like that's where we're at too, we, we are public health, we are the Health Department, we are, we are our government, right? So we need to also begin to work, or at least that's my point of view, to begin to work on making sure that we're reflective of our community, that we're serving, and the demographics, and also just for ourselves, if we can't change the space around us, if we can't, if we don't really know how we navigate. And that's one of the things that personally, I, I learned, how I navigated this community, how I navigated my space, when I was working with clients, understanding the different trauma that they come with, the assets that they come with, just really making sure that we, that all of that, having a balance with all of that, and how I present myself as, as a person of color in some of these, in these spaces, and as a tall Latina working in some of these spaces. So anyway, that's the quick bullet points there. I just wanted to provide you a little bit of, of that background. So it is a two-day workshop. It's, I'm not, I'll be honest, it's pretty intense. It can be overwhelming for some folks, because it is a lot. But what we want to do, and what we did, I guess it was five years, six years ago, when we, the Health and All Actions and the Health Equity and, sorry, Health and All Actions Committee, which is one of our internal committees, we committed $5,000 to be able to send folks to this training. So some of our, some of our Board of Commissioners leaders attended, other folks, other department leads as well were able to attend, and it was really transformational. It is, we had the opportunity to have a debrief session as well, to work, together work and unpack some of the feelings, some of the experiences that they encountered. I had one-on-ones with individuals as well, just to make sure that what the, the work that they're doing matters. And even, there's a lot of, a lot of content that might make individuals feel a little uncomfortable, and, and that should not deter anyone from engaging. It is really transformational. That's the intent. The intention is to kind of walk through uncomfortable, uncomfortable, not unsafe, but uncomfortable situations, and be able to use the tools that you're learning to be able to navigate those spaces or those conversations. So that's what we're working on this, this year. We were able to execute, excuse me, confirm or execute a contract with Courageous Conversation this year, and we will be offering two series, so it's, so two two-day workshops at the end of this month, and also at the beginning of May, and with our Public Health Modernization funding, and together with the Health and All Actions and our EDI, but our EDI program also at the Board. Thank you all for your support. We will be able to offer this first round of trainings with Sarah Siddiqui's leadership and coordinating all the details. So we're super excited. Last week, we had 106 Health Services staff members, well, I'll say about 100, about 100 Health Services staff members, and then, because this is sponsored by our Board of Commissioners and our Health and All Actions Committee, we have about six so far that are not Health Services staff members. So we're super excited. We can fit up to 160, 80 per session, so we have about 70 for the, 70 staff members for the end of this month, and we still have about 45 or so seats available for the one in, on May 1st and 2nd. This will take place at the Corvallis Courtyard, Marriott Downtown, and breakfast and lunch are included, because they are intense, we are there all day, and thank you. And really, that's where the Board of Commissioners and our Health and All Actions teams stepped up and, you know, and provided kind of that, that support for staff to really engage. So thank you all for, for that support.
I'll just add that, Commissioner Shepherd, before you're with us, I sent an email out to, to this group. I'm going to just put it at the top of everyone's inboxes and make sure that you're added. So that link to, to sign up is in there. I know the end of February is a really short notice. The, the May event still has spots available as well, if you're able to make them.
We are planning debrief sessions for each one, for these two, and a couple of sessions virtually and in person, just to make sure that we're meeting our staff where they are at. We're open to doing one-on-ones as well. Sarah, our amazing Health Equity Coordinator is, has been very proactive, as always, in scheduling these sessions ahead of time, carving out, getting them on our, on our calendars, making sure that not only our staff are supportive, but that she is supportive too in this new adventure for the county, so we're super excited. If you would move to the next slide, please, if you have a moment, the, here are the details. We have registration open through February 14th. Really, I think the, the one in February has already kind of, is full, but we, that registration date for the May can, can further be extended. Again, this is open to health-affiliated, Health Services staff and health-affiliated bodies of work, so our Health and All Actions, our Board of Health, our Board of Commissioners, our, really, all of our Equity Committee members. And so really, there is a door open to the rest of the county departments, because most of them, if not all, are part of our Health and All Actions or Equity Committees as well. So there's the QR code, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm, I am already registered for the one in May, and so I am very much looking forward to it. And I think in my experience in my life, the best way to grow is to put yourself in uncomfortable situations. And yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Any questions, comments?
You know, we just want to press on, and it's important that it's budget season, it's our biannual season. There's a lot going on in the world right now that we will be talking about as we move forward on this work, the equity work that we're committed to. All departments still have a climate goal, but as well as an equity goal embedded into their annual budgets, which include things like the Board of Elections and our wonderful DA's office. And, you know, we're, we're also trying to get there overall, as it becoming a continued value that I think all these, everyone at this table shares and is committed to.
So I wouldn't be able to make the February, February one anyways. I'm flying to DC, that's when I'm, I'm flying out on the morning of the 28th. But I'll look into attending the May one. I'm public meetings law concerned about if two of us are there. So I'm just, I'll just talk to Vance about what, what that looks like.
We could notice a possible quorum, as long as we don't talk about decision-making.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to double-check. Yeah.
Thank you. I'll just end really quick with this, that it's, this is not, I've, I've engaged with many, many EDI or equity-related racial diversity trainings. This is not your typical, this is, this is one where you, it's really more about yourself and how, and, and how you perceive kind of the people around you, and the decisions that you make, and why. And so it's really more about yourself, and they walk you through, providing you tools to understand that. And it can be, and even though there's, you know, there could be up to 80 individuals in the space, there is a lot of self-reflection that happens that's private, and that it's respectful for yourself. And of course, there might be moments where it might feel uncomfortable, but they're going to walk you through how to lean into that uncomfort zone, and how to, how to build your, your own resiliency in that. So anyway, I just wanted to say, I've, there's been, I think I've attended five different times, and it's, every single time, I have learned something new. And I engage with different people, and it's just really great to be able to do that networking and do that peer self-ref, peer reflecting as well. So let me know if you have any questions. We're really excited to see you there. We are encouraging our, our management at Health Services also to go through this, because we want to make sure that staff, as they go through it, that they are supported through these conversations and these, the spaces that they connect with also, not just with their peers as staff, but also with, within their environment of their work area when they're engaging with communities. So I'm very thankful to April for her leadership and Lacey's support as well, to make sure that we provide the, the time for management and for staff to engage in this important, that I feel very important, time to, to learn, to learn and reflect. So, thank you.
You started this journey in implicit bias training? And is it similar to implicit bias training? Anybody can take a Google survey, or you can just Google implicit, to begin your journey of why you would want to possibly delve into this work? Because what you're also saying is, is this training is work. And, and for me, it began with, you know, I'm going to take an implicit bias change. I guess what, I'm biased, for lots of different reasons, my own life experiences. So I think it can begin there. If anybody's kind of curious or nervous about what they may be walking into, I always say, just like, take a pop quiz on it, to kind of really see where, where you're, where you're at, or where your thought processes.
Yeah, yes. I agree, actually. In fact, they, they mentioned this too, it's part of the process as well, but Harvard, I think it's Harvard University has a tool that you can do it online, and it kind of walks, it's fast.
It's free, yeah.
It's free, and it kind of walks you through, and it, it asks you questions, and it gives you a specific amount of time to answer, and essentially, it helps you better understand what your own biases might be. And essentially it helps you better understand what your own biases might be, your implicit biases might be. And you'll be surprised. I am very, I was very surprised.
Yep.
So it's good.
Yeah. I, I took, I don't know, back in 2017 or 18 and was shocked to find out that I'm biased, heavily biased with gender roles, even though I consider myself an adamant feminist. So.
We are shaped by our experiences.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and even though we might be doing something different today or believe something different, there's, we have roots. And so it's, it's, it's great to acknowledge and I think that's a first step.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Well, just checking my schedule fit. Doesn't look like February works and it's full anyway.
We would accommodate.
For you, we would accommodate. Hold up an extra chair.
Special.
Yeah. I'll take it with you. I'll sit next to you.
In the back.
Oh, we're not in the back, in the front.
And just mention the budget work in May, but it doesn't look like it's on my calendar. So that, that early. So appreciate the discussion and, and there is no problem with more than one mission or event. We do it on a regular basis, like yesterday. So I appreciate the background.
Commitment, yeah.
I will do some Googling.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, doesn't take long, right?
No.
No. I think it was the Harvard class too, yeah.
Good. Well, you all are cordially invited. Thank you. Really appreciate your participation. Seeing leaders in these spaces is so impactful. So if you have a chance, and if you don't, it's, you know, we are hoping that we can continue having these opportunities in the future. And we're building in some status, some, some survey data kind of collection, pre and post, just to make sure that we have information to help us make informed decisions in the future.
Very good. Thank you. Well, with that, we can go into our next agenda item, which.
It's Rosio again.
Yep, here we go. Okay. Public health week events, please.
Thank you. Again, just a really brief introduction. When I first arrived as that public health director on December 15th, 2020, I learned quickly and having a public health background, we know, knew how, how important Public Health Week, the first week of April is to public health. Traditionally, the, the, the event of the year for public health divisions or departments across the country, there's always a theme. And I really appreciated learning what Benton County had, had traditionally done. Of course, everything got ended for several years. And when I happened to be listening in to a goal setting meeting where you all were talking about proclamations and events, I, I just didn't feel like I got the information right when I spoke up. So I'm really grateful for Rosio to provide a, a brief overview of what was, what the different options are for, for us to have something, something to happen to meaningfully engage community, involve county leadership and celebrate and highlight the, the work of public health. So this will be a, a, a brief item, but just wanted to bring everyone up to speed with the history of, of Public Health Week.
Thank you, April. Thank you. And I'm here actually stepping in for Sarah Hartstein, our Public Health Director. She is on vacation and very well deserved. I'm super excited that she was able to take time off. But, so thank you. Yes, I'll, we'll go to the next slide. Just to provide you with what April already mentioned, that each April, it's, it's the American Public Health Association who essentially puts together a package of tools and resources to help the nation's public health divisions recognize all the work that we as a community collectively work and we work to recognize contributions across the, the different sectors and addressing any health key issues. When I speak about public health and, and any public health person would say that it really is everything, everything has or is included in public health. And that includes healthy spaces, transportation, how people navigate their community, there's built environments. So every year, there's an annual campaign that the American Public Health Association puts out and it's essentially, it's put together to help us tell our story of our local community. It just so happens that it also coincides in every April, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation puts out county health rankings as well. I think they've shifted a little bit over the last year or two of how they put information out, but essentially they, they, for each state, they rank our counties. And Benton County has hovered between one and, one and three as the healthiest county in the state. Nevertheless, and we'll move to the next slide. This is something that our commissioners have engaged with in, in the past to come together as a Board of Health and have discussions on any emerging health topic, especially if there are any, and to highlight that even though we may have hovered in the, in the past between the first, second or third healthiest county, that there's still a lot of work to do locally. And so, and we'll move over to the next slide.
I just mentioned to you online, it's still showing the first slide of Public Health Week overview. And it looks like it's, I can see the slides on the side. Things were going so smoothly.
I know. Sorry.
As long as we're paused, I really like that, that picture.
Agreed.
Of those, of the commissioners in, I'm assuming 2017.
Around that time, absolutely, yes. I found a lot of gems as I was going through our folders. Yeah, so this is a quick, and the, save the date invitation. It, it really is an invitation that has gone out historically to the general public, being intentional about inviting our community partners from different sectors that have, that have made any contribution really to, to our community. And the evening, this is a, an event, a Board of Health meeting, an official Board of Health meeting that gets moved from that Tuesday morning to the evening. And the evening is had, been kicked off with appetizers and then with a, a program and then finishing off with an award ceremony. And that program has been essentially part of a topic of discussion that might be relevant for that year. And so we'll move to the next slide. It has been primarily led the evening by the Board of Health or Board of Commissioners and also our, I want to make sure, our public health, public health planning advisory committee, otherwise also known as P-PAC, one of our advisory committees that we, after, after COVID, we kind of went on a, before COVID, right before COVID, we went on a little hiatus and haven't been able to bring that back up. But that's one of our goals in the near future. But P-PAC members have been leading or have led those, the, this is a draft agenda, internal draft agenda where Commissioner Harameyo and different part of folks from the Health Department and our P-PAC members have facilitated the, the evening. And we'll move on to the next slide. As previously mentioned, it's just some pictures. I just wanted to show you all kind of where it's been held. The, the Sunset Meeting Room was the biggest room that we had at that time. On, that's where the Board of Commissioners were meeting as well, when there were bigger, bigger engagements. And so, yeah. I'll move on to the next slide. This is just a quick overview of per year of what we have highlighted as far as topics go. Just depends on what kind of work we're doing that year, if it's related to housing and health or transportation. In 2018, we had a preview of the 1918 influenza pandemic, which was, I would say, I guess today timely, just to get us prepared for what was to come ahead. There's also been a lot of work with our community health assessment and our community health improvement plans. And this is the opportunity, the Board of Health usually only meets once a year. And so this is a, a time for any adoptions or resolutions or proclamations to happen related to public health. And so as you see, the 2020 to 2023, nothing occurred because of COVID-19, the very last, so in 2020, we were all set to go and we were going to celebrate health in the outdoors and the, the, the collaboration and really the overlap of like health, physical and mental health and the outdoors and working with a lot of our outdoors partners, our Board of Commissioners, who were, were heavily involved in, in a lot of that work with our outdoor partner, outdoor recreation partners right before the pandemic. And then last year in 2024, because we had that pause with COVID-19, we were still trying to get back into what we had historically done or, or something alike. And so rather than having an evening and an event, we decide, collectively decided that having a proclamation during the regular board meeting, having a pre-event breakfast with different partners. So we had that here in this building and we'll move on to the next slide.
We're still a couple of slides behind that one too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to pass around a couple of plaques. After the program happens, we have been able to have a, an award ceremony. We have the Sheldon Wagner Award. The Sheldon Wagner Award was named for Dr. Sheldon Wagner, Shag Wagner, who practiced medicine locally and later was a professor of preventative medicine and toxicology at OSU. He was actually one of our P-PAC or our advisory committee members. And so, and he passed away in 2009. So in 2008, that's when this award was established. And the award is given to a community partner who has been, has been contributing, well, all of our partners are, are contributing to public health, but just wanted to provide the opportunity to recognize a community partner and their accomplishments and their contributions to overall public health. So you'll see a list of a lot of the, a lot of the Sheldon Wagner awardees on that plaque. There's the, maybe two, two behind, maybe? Oh. What? Yeah, right there, right there, it's great. And then, and then I would say about, I think it was 2014 or 15, we, we developed the Roger Urban, the Roger Urban Health and All Policies Award. Roger Urban was part of Benton County since 1979 and he was in the Public Works Department. He led the, the department for over 15, 13 years, I think. And he was instrumental in building the, what is now called Health and All Actions. It used to be called the, the Healthy Active Community Environments Committee at HACE. And so now Health and All Actions, but he was just instrumental in, in really doing a lot of public health work, what we called it. And it was for him, it was building roundabouts and building safe spaces for pedestrians and cyclists and that is public health. And we had the opportunity to work with Roger and his team. And so the Roger Urban Health and All Actions Award was developed and that also circulated there in the plaque.
Just wear my new tie.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And then we'll move on to the next. So this year, we have April 17th through the 13th. Oh, one, one back? Thank you. It's the, the 30th anniversary and wanted to come and present you with this background to see what you would like to explore for this year, if, if, if there is an opportunity to explore any happening. So I provided you there with key priorities for this year. The Health, Health Department or Public Health Division is ready to support on whatever you decide if you want it. You can move on to the next slide really quick, but it's the beginning of April and I, we provided you with some options, but certainly this is open for discussion for you all to, to decide or brainstorm together. And that's really all I have. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer. Thank you.
That was great, Rosio. I guess my comment would just be, we also have some really exciting work that's happening in public health and all, actually all of our health department, we have to name, building after a leader in public health, who was Barbara, Barbara Ross, and as well as our, our goal of opening the Crisis Center. So any way that we can kind of wrap in with all of our messaging and all the good things that our county is trying to do and our commitment would be awesome. So, but as far as scheduling and dates, I do look at my fellow commissioners and their schedules as well as most folks to see what would work. Where is the event?
To be determined. It has moved to different locations just because of our limited space avail, or available availability. We've held it at the Corvallis Library. We've had it recently at the Sunset. And so, and then last year, we had the pre-event here.
Okay.
Because we didn't own this building yet during that time. So this is the biggest building that we have now that we could maybe do some, some more.
I guess for me, I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other of what time, whether morning or evening. I, a couple of thoughts, I know Commissioner Shepherd is, he can speak for himself, but has been, you know, wanting to get us to do some more evening stuff. But I also would, I mean, you are the experts. I mean, what, what do you think? That's what I'm interested in.
Well, I'll, I'll share that an evening event is accessible for community members and so maybe more so than a, a morning event. Folks who would otherwise maybe have barriers with work and, and, and other things may be available at night. However, we know that this, this is shorter notice than, than we would like to have. So if we do have an evening event, we would absolutely understand if, if, if an entire BOC meeting couldn't move to an, an evening session. It is nice to adopt the chip at that, the, the Community Health Improvement Plan at that time. And maybe it's, you know, if, if we do need to look at option three as a possibility and then plan for coming years to have the Board of Health. Whatever works better for you, but I do think that moving back to an evening community event would be ideal.
I mean, just looking at my calendar right now, April 15th works the best for me versus April 1st. And I'm okay with an evening. Yeah.
I, I agree. I, I think it'd be better to have an evening event. It'd be humorous to have just a meeting just to read the proclamation and adopt that. I think that'd be funny. I don't think that, I didn't, but anyways, an evening event, whether that's having a full meeting or having one person read it, you know, whatever ends up, ends up working also depends on what's on the agenda. And April 15th, I tend to shy away from having big public events on April 1st. I think that it's less of a good, less of a good idea. But on April 15th, I think would work great.
You can also move your Board of Commissioner meeting later in the day and then roll it right into, to the event.
I can see, I, yeah, I would hesitate to have. I can see, yeah, I would hesitate to want to have the entire meeting at that time because people don't want to come and sit through all that.
If there's food waiting for them, definitely not.
Well, but I'm okay with just that section, you know, reading or whatever, whatever works.
The meeting, the meeting at least historically has essentially been the program that's developed. There isn't any other, other topics that have been addressed during that move to Board of Commissioner or Board of Health meeting. And it is captured because it is, you are, you would be communiting with the Board of Health. Minutes from the previous year have been approved as well. So they just, essentially, there is, there has not been, doesn't need to be this way, but it hasn't, there has not been any other topic. And then next slide, there's other potential focus areas that we might want to consider in addition to Rachel's suggestion about linking with Crisis Center and any of that type of messaging or collaborations. Our partnership with, for community health, they're unveiling their regional website. And then we have CHIP or Community Health Improvement Plan strategies and objectives that could also be adopted or accepted. And then we also have a lot of work that we could highlight through the Flexible Housing Subsidy Pool Program in addition to making sure we have Crisis Center information or messaging.
Well, Monroe Clinic, there's a lot going on. I don't think I would rule out either April 1 or April 15. There's some logistics and I think it would be a mistake to just have one, try to force it into one date no matter what. And I'm not sure why you pick those two Tuesdays, but there must be a reason.
They coincide with, with Public Health Week and the month in which it's happening, really. Those are the two Tuesdays.
Yeah, Public Health Week this year is April 7 through the 13th. And you, the Board of Commissioners typically meets on the first and the third Tuesday of the month. It doesn't have to be that way. It's just, it's been that way where rather than, than moving to a different day, they move the time and the location. And so, and we provided April 1st, which is the week before Public Health Week, and then April 15th, which is after. But if there's other, you know, considerations or other possibilities.
Is there a school break during the week before?
It's in March.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, we usually have this meeting, the goal-setting meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, which looks like that would be April 8th, which also is currently open for me. Things can fill up quick though. Yeah.
I think that, you know, with the special convening of Board of Health, I don't, and I know that your schedules are already filling up for, for your board meetings. I don't know if, if there's an opportunity or desire at this point to have schedule reallocation to actually say, we're having a special meeting this day, it's going to be at this other location. If that's possible, great. If not, we can aim for next year for doing that.
I think we can be flexible.
Okay.
Have you, I guess, focus areas is kind of a theme. Doesn't necessarily have to be this year, but in 2020, like you said, the theme was outdoor health. I like that theme.
I love that theme, too.
That's my.
It's a great theme. Public Health Week comes with an overarching theme and from, from the American Public Health Association. We don't have to stick to specifics. They're usually pretty broad so that you can fit most of those work into them. You probably know what the theme is going to be this year, and I don't.
Yeah, there's, the theme this year, there's a couple of ones. It starts here, climate action starts here, health equity starts here. Essentially, this starts here and it's pretty broad so we can accommodate, you know, we can fit really anything related to public health. Advocacy starts here, the future of public health starts here. So, and it kind of encompasses even including workforce development or support.
Great. There's a lot of opportunity.
Yeah. The Community Health Improvement Plan, which is regional, has four main priorities, which is behavioral health, housing, inclusion, diversity, anti-racism, and equity. And then I can't remember what the other, other one is at the top of my head, but that there could be some focus around the work that we in Benton County are doing based on the Community Health Improvement Plan and as part of the adoption of this. So just throwing out ideas that we could approach. And, and our health, our public health team would be behind the scenes, putting together, working with you to put together agendas or the evening logistics as well, if you decide to, to move in that direction. Or morning, morning events, whenever you decide.
I like the evening community gathering around the health topic, especially that we haven't done that since 2019. Lots happened since then. We have a lot to be thankful for, our heroic efforts from health folks to get us through the pandemic in relatively good shape. Just highlight the importance of having knowledgeable people paying attention to what the world is giving us. I was not sure of the history, but I think of the first half of the 20th century and infectious diseases. I would guess health departments were more robust as far as personnel and tuberculosis and polio and ever popular measles. When I was a kid, everybody got measles. You were a kid, you turned. Things have changed. We've made good progress in those areas, but that doesn't mean we can just relax and happy days are here again. So we're in a different era, but I think just as critical, your efforts are just as critical and need to let the community know what, what we're up to.
Thank you. And it takes a village because both ourselves, but really our partners, especially during the pandemic, it really did take a village to mitigate the pandemic. Have very strong partners.
Have pictures of vaccination events at Research Stadium.
I have a question, going back to the awards. How do you decide? I mean, do people nominate folks or groups or how does that work?
It's the Public Health Advisory Committee members who had a process in identifying, nominating, and selecting the individuals who would get the Sheldon Wagner Award. And then as the Health in All Actions Committee for their Roger Urban Award, it would have a similar process as well.
In the absence of the Public Health Planning Committee or as it's being built back up, we'll ensure that a process and a work group is identified.
Is there any family members of the individuals that they're named after that are invited to this?
Yes, they have historically been invited and it's just, it's been a very proud moment for many of our awardees. It's been great, really great. And our community partners as well. So we're, we're strategic about how we invite them.
Sure.
It's a really great moment for our community.
Good. That sounds great. All positive things. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time today. And with that, we can move on to item 4.4, the 2025 Proclamations and Events Schedule. This is on page 27 of our electronic packet. So we had had a conversation about this at a previous meeting or two, and these are all the notes put together in one, on one page and just wanted to make sure that this is what commissioners were expecting and so that we can give staff kind of the final, okay, this is what we want. And one note, we've received one more request for another proclamation, which would be for Lesbian Visibility Week, April 21st through 27th. And I would prefer that we, that that is one that is red and that individual TBD, but just wanted to make sure that's okay with other commissioners.
I'm okay with that, yes.
Okay. Any, anything look different than what you remember from our conversation or do you have any proposed changes?
Nothing looks different. I'm noting that we're still at TBD for wildfire awareness month, and I don't want that to, for an event for wildfire, and I don't want that to get lost over the next couple of weeks or I guess months. So is somebody, is somebody like making sure that we are thinking about an event and not just saying, we'll have one and then May comes and we go, whoops?
Sure.
Okay.
We will definitely talk about that in our agenda setting meeting this afternoon that we have the chair this afternoon about. Obvious partners would be Brian Lee and our local fire folks as well. Also, another priority that the chair brought up as well is having the chiefs. We haven't done that in the last few years where we get the law enforcement chiefs throughout the county together to kind of talk. And we'd like to schedule that probably late spring, wouldn't you say?
I mean, for the, for law enforcement, yes. That would be more of like a work session, not necessarily a proclamation, but yes.
It's another kind of event?
What about, what about the fire chiefs?
That's what, so that's what I think we're going to say.
That's what I thought you meant by that.
Fire chiefs would be great.
Yeah. There's more of that.
So we can totally flesh that out. That's what we meet with the chair every other week, usually on, you know, trying to plan these, these events out. So that's certainly be.
And I would also defer to Brian Lee's recommendation.
Well, the schedules of the fire chiefs, too.
Yeah, 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 all of those things. And May is.
A busy month.
Busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's OSU Extension wildfire agents and I've lost track, there's about six in the state. And there's been a little turnover. I've lost track of who's in our area, but we also at OSU have the coordinator of all six, so.
It's a great idea. Do you know the name? Do you know his name or her name?
Her name.
Or their name?
I can, yes.
Thank you.
Somewhere.
Great. We can totally work on that.
I just want to make sure that somebody out there has the job of making that event happen. That's, I don't know who that is, but I'm glad that it's on the radar.
Sounds good. I see, yes. So, so we can change that TBD to yes, I believe. Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure. And I think the chair brought up an idea of making it part of information sharing as the, the theme of the, the meeting too, right? Or something along those lines.
Sure. And again, I think we could, yeah. I mean, that's typically what we aim for, I think, right? Is like an event at the beginning of the meeting. But if there's other suggestions.
Yeah, we could do a little catering beforehand and have coffee and.
I, I really like the idea of having our fire protection district electeds, the chiefs, and, and just like, because they really, the fire protection district elected officials don't get a lot of conversation or recognition as elected officials. They do a lot of management, but they don't really get a lot of credit for it. And so having, having them and then have it be an information sharing. I know most of them are very passionate about wildfire issues and if Brian shows up and is promises to do a little talk about it, many of them would just want to show up for that, let alone being recognized.
Awesome. Yeah. So we can look into feasibility and, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Well, I like the idea of making it more than just a routine piece of business, that we take this seriously and here are some of our partners.
We can make that happen.
Hey, Commissioner Malone, any other changes or items that you or thoughts about?
I don't think so. It seems like that captures what we were, what we decided the other meeting.
All right. Well, with that, I think we can move along. I'm going to call for a five-minute break. So let's come back at 10:11.
They did have us muted.
Is yours, yes? They did have us muted?
It looks like it, yes.
Were we muted?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So we are ready to get going again. And next up is new business, item 5.1, Association of Oregon Counties 2025 Membership Renewal and Dues. So the question for us is, do we want, do we want to renew our AOC membership?
I think the consensus is yes, and I'm just ready to make the motion.
Go for it.
I'd like a discussion.
Okay.
Go for it.
And I don't disagree with that, but after sitting through the legislative committee meeting yesterday as a non-voting member. And this is a theme, the Steering Committee does a relatively in-depth study of bills, makes recommendations. And then we spent most of the time reversing several, many, in different steering committees. And it's, I, I think we have great staff at AOC that is kind of constrained by the membership. Part of the reason for the discussion is just, I've gone to meetings for over six years now. And it's the same, each county has one vote, but you pay my population. And I'm always amazed to sit next to, I don't know, my county commissioner. And if our bill is $43,000, I guess in there is several hundred thousand. And the organization wouldn't function without the populous counties. But they are not very well respected as far as what wishes are of most of the people of the state.
Are you saying it's not an equitable distribution for the smaller counties compared to the larger counties?
I'm saying the smaller counties have more play in legislative efforts than I'm comfortable with. And it's a systemic problem with the organization. And so I will vote for this, but have reservations. I, I'm glad we have our own government relations folks to more directly represent our interests.
Any comments?
I'll just say that one of the things I found out when, at the AOC meeting in November, when they were training, you know, it was our first meeting of the new class of county commissioners. They said that during Commissioner Scar's upcoming presidency, so not this year, but next year, that is going to be a big topic of conversation. Like there's work being done right now about, about the fee schedule and, and influence and stuff like that. And she is regrettably, the, when, when it's gonna, when it's gonna come up for a vote and for conversation as a group, she's the one who's stuck being president at that time. So that's, and that was something they shared with us, that that is a, a topic that people are, people are talking about.
We've been talking about it for, since I've been there. Well, not quite, but since I've been there, this is a problem. There's been some tweaking and there was, I can't remember the language, but we should respect the, what's coming out of the steering committees because they're the ones that really have the, have had the in-depth discussion of specific bills. And that definitely didn't happen yesterday. Five or six times, four or five, steering committee recommendations got reversed.
It's, I mean, it just, it goes to show that it's important who the president nominates as co-chairs and who we vote for. In my experience, AOC does lean more conservative. You could compare that to the, like the state legislature, which we, you know, conservative folks tend to complain that that leans too liberal, so.
Well, based on population.
And I know the membership committee has tried to do lots of tweaks and fix it and make it work for everybody. I think, I mean, the main problem is small counties just can't, cannot afford $43,000. They just don't have the general fund dollars to support that. So it's definitely not a perfect system. I do think it is still worthwhile for us to be members. And the only thing I would suggest for the motion is to add and Council of Forest Trust Land Counties dues, because that is technically a separate body from AOC. And that amount is included in the $43,071.26.
I'm ready.
Go for it.
I move to approve the renewal of Benton County's membership in the Association of Oregon Counties and in the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties in the amount of $43,071.26.
Second.
For the year of?
Oh, for the year of 2025.
All right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. And then we can move along to a conversation about the ABC House Celebration of Hope event sponsorship. Is the Board of Commissioners interested in sponsoring again? Historically, we have done so. I am scrolling to that page now.
Forty-three.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I'll open it up for conversation.
So, ma'am, the chair?
Yes.
I read, and I just, I do not remember what page, but one, one of the pages, either on this sponsorship or on the next one, said our budget for sponsorship is $1,800, that has $1,800 left.
That's correct.
And the minimum for ABC House is 800. And pretty much the minimum for Celebrate Corvallis, I'm kind of merging the two, is 1,200, which is more than 1,800 added together. So that was my concern about it's, is there other monies we can appropriate in there? Or are we having to stick within 1,800?
Find another $200 anywhere. Sorry, that sarcastic.
You know what? Some of us might be able to pony it up, but it's like, I.
It's priorities, like, you know, where, where do you want to land at the end of this year? Like you mentioned Celebrate Corvallis, is there other sponsorship opportunities in here?
Yeah, are there other things between now and what, June or July 1st that we want to do?
Not that I'm aware of, but we're sponsoring stuff. Yes, exactly. Yes, and I, you know, in the past, we've been able to make it work.
I would say the Board of Commissioners, you know, with the budget that you have, you have discretion within your line items, material and supplies. We have traditionally tried to be somewhat set on the sponsorship piece because there's obviously sometimes some sensitivity related to that. However, as Commissioner Wise pointed out, if something were to come up, I can tell you that your budget is trending low. So you are going to come in under budget for this, this by name. And so you would have some discretion within that if something were to occur.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm fine to do both. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, yeah, $200, not a lot in a budget the size of Benton Counties. But I wanted to make sure that we were good on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Celebrate Corvallis, it seems like they increased it by a lot.
I was gonna say, that's part of it too, is I think almost all of these sponsorships, well, a couple of them have gone up from previous years. So I think we budgeted for a certain amount and then the ask went up.
Yeah.
Do we know on either one of these what it was the previous year?
At one point, I think I remember, I don't remember, I know a couple of years ago, it was like $800 for Celebrate Corvallis. And now it's 1,200. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, in here, in here, it's, in '22 and '23, it was 600. In '24, it was 1,000. So it's gone, it's doubled in two years. So that's a lot.
Paying the growl at them.
Growl at the, at the new, at the new chamber president?
Does that need to be the chair's responsibility or?
All of it. You know, it's the same event with no explanation of why the increase other than we think we can.
I'm sure, well, I, so I'll, well, let's see, I don't know about ABC House, but I am the liaison to the Corvallis Chamber of Commerce. And I know they're, they are actually, the dinner situation is going to be better. And they're actually figuring out a way to make it more cost-effective. But supplies and materials and costs, inflation, all of that, it's just.
They have a bathroom sponsor. Did you read that?
Yes, so it'll be, I'll be, yes.
Okay.
On the bathroom counter, we'll be going.
Maybe there's a competition for the X.
The other thing, it, it would be nice to have a spreadsheet on what we're sponsoring, currently sponsoring. Just what we've talked about. Well, last year it was so much, otherwise it makes it hard to budget.
Sure.
And it seems like we need some beyond the ones that we normally do. If something comes up or that we want to support.
We can provide that at next goal setting if you'd like, Chair.
Sure, or do you want it at goal setting? Do you want it emailed? What works best for you?
It seems like a goal setting, so we could have a little discussion if, you know, there, there are other, if it seems skewed towards one event versus making sure we're spreading the love around the county.
Okay. I believe, and I'm pretty sure that does exist and it's something that we would probably see again with the upcoming budget. So I'm sure that'll be not hard to get, worth a good conversation. So before us is first the decision of whether or not to sponsor ABC House at what level.
Are you, are you, would you be attending, I'm assuming?
Yeah, well, all of us would be, right?
Okay.
Purchase, that, I think that would be the, you know, purchase a table and then we attend and invite a couple of people.
Eight?
I'm checking my personal calendar and it might have, I have something that even, but I can probably do that, so I can.
That's a good idea, too.
Yeah.
We've got some time to figure out who, but I remember last year it seemed like we had a full table. I think the sheriff is supportive of the ABC House and was there in person.
Because if, you know, if, if it turns out that I can't move my thing and I, I can't go, we have enough people who would be good to show up.
We do this regularly. For Flometh.
Yep. So I would move to sponsor the ABC House event at the table sponsor level.
Of?
Of $800.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And then Celebrate Corvallis.
I would move to sponsor the Celebrate Corvallis event at the table sponsor level of $1,200.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
But as we remember, we have to growl, so.
And it says we can have the logo on our table and I want to make it really big.
Okay, well, talk, you know, talk to, you know, we're working on an ice sculpture, so it'd be really nice.
You can bring that pad, if you have a truck, you can bring that.
Question, do we need to make a motion to appropriate $200? Or is that something that can be done administratively?
We can do that administratively.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, it'll come out of my pocket, it's okay.
Okay. If that changes, we can always do it at a future meeting. Okay. All right. And then with that, we are going to move on to the item we added, item 5.4, which is letter of, potential letter of support for Senate Bill 564. Rick, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I don't know, is Gary perhaps on?
Because I, yes, is Gary Stokka, I see Laurel Byer.
Okay.
Laurel can tell, not, try to put anyone on the spot, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start.
Jump in.
I can, I can start and Laurel can certainly jump in and, and correct me on that. She can certainly give more of the details to the project. So first of all, thank you for adding this late on the agenda. As you all know, with the legislative session, it happens fast and furious. And before you know it, it'll go up and ready to be, at least, at least have a public hearing. So tonight, Senate Bill 564 is up. This particular bill is in support of appropriating dollars specifically for the widening of Highway 20. And, and I'll let Laurel actually explain a little bit more of the details of the actual project. But widening of the road as between here and Flometh. And this is a bill that, again, is an appropriation. Clearly, as, as Laurel and Gary have indicated, this is part of our Benton County Transportation Plan, has been, I believe, for some. has been, I believe, for some time, and so we would like to suggest support for this through a letter. There is opportunity to testify as well, if, if any of the commissioners would be interested in something like that. But at least at the minimum, it was recommended by CFM that we put forward a, a support letter. Laurel and Gary is kind enough to draft that letter, that is part of your packet, and maybe with that, I'll just kick it over to Laurel really quickly to see if she can just, you know, update you a little bit more specifics about the project itself.
Yeah, and so this corridor, they've been studying it for a long time. They were looking at trying to just improve interconnectedness between the traffic signals, because right now, the freight, freight traffic, like if the light turns red, they gotta stop. So they were trying to provide, like, freight vehicles as they were moving through, but that's kind of hit a stalemate, because it's more expensive than what expected. And so I think this bid is that, you know, people are kind of frustrated, because especially during the summer, the traffic on Highway twenty thirty-four is, is just egregious. And so I think this is just an effort to kickstart it, to try to get some wider, get additional lanes in there, as well as improve the existing intersections, not only, you know, for the, the traffic signals themselves, but also for bike and ped use, because, you know, there's not really, there's the multi-use path on the south side of the highway, but the rest of it is really not urbanized whatsoever. And so there's some opportunities there to, to kind of bring it more up to date, like they did with the safety improvements along the Highway twenty section between Circle and North Albany. This would be improving Highway twenty between Corvallis and Flometh. Are there any specific questions? I don't, they, you know, this is just a big ask, I feel, but we'll see where it goes.
And I might just add to that big ask piece, is that typically with bills, seeing appropriation bills, as I like to see this early, typically, these kind of decisions from a financial standpoint are probably going to be held until May, because they're not going to make any, any critical funding decisions until the forecast is in, they know exactly how much money is. However, it's always a good sign when this kind of bill does get an early hearing, because they get it through the stages, because I think most of you know, bills often die if they don't get through certain hearings. And so being able to get it through the stages of these hearings, I think, will well keep it alive. And then when money presents itself, perhaps be fortunate enough to get some. So I think it's a good sign that, that it's early, but, you know, you never can tell with these things.
Comments, questions?
Who's sponsoring this?
This is sponsored by Senator Anderson.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it will be going in front of the Joint Committee on Transportation.
You mentioned signals, and I've had discussions with local ODOT folks for years about smart signals. And I'm, I guess I'd like a little clarification. Oh, that's too expensive, but we're going to widen Flometh Boulevard. I, I'm, I guess I'm-
I mean, I don't want to speak necessarily for ODOT, but I think if they were going to widen it, they would also look at improving the intersection interconnectability, and to provide that freight, you know, demand. So I don't, I don't think it would just be, we're going to widen and leave the traffic signals as is. I think it would have to be a full project where they have to improve that interconnectability.
Okay, your example, Laurel, of the big trucks and getting stopped at, say they're, well, it doesn't matter which direction, but they can get stopped at three signals, and, because it takes them a while to get up to forty or forty-five miles an hour, and then they miss the next light. And I, I can see making a lot of progress just by improving traffic flow. So, yeah, I'm in support of this, but I guess I'd like a little more detail what, what somebody has in mind.
Yeah, and even the bill itself, I read through, it's, it's so broad, and it's not very specific whatsoever. So that's, that's kind of hard, like even I had issues, like kind of coming up with how to, to phrase the letter, because I don't know exactly what they're proposing. It, I feel like as a placeholder, is like, if they have money, maybe they'll put it towards this project.
That's, that's my sense as well, and talking to CFM, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, wanting the detail. I think, you know, where they're starting is a very large placeholder, say, okay, we want, we want a place in line. This is an important project, let's make sure it's queued up, and if resources are there, and then the detail probably end up falling along a little bit later.
Well, is this something that could work from adding lanes to the smart signals and white bed? I know there's, I've seen pretty detailed plans on each of the intersections, what could be done there, which to me seems a lot more practical in a cost terms than, oh, we'll turn this into a four-lane freeway. Anyway.
Is the sheriff on?
Yeah.
That, that makes sense. Am I on the right track? We're asking for this, and then, oh, we'll, we'll be satisfied with something.
Again, this is Senator Anderson, you know, seeing obviously transportation is going to be a discussion item coming up, and I think he's trying to get, you know, at least a bill out there that would have opportunities to kind of shape some resources as it come through. So I think a lot more detail, but, you know, typically, you don't see too much detail at this level unless it's a department budget.
And I think the framework for the transportation bill is supposed to come out by the end of the week. So, things are moving.
I would call for a motion unless Sheriff Finnard would like to say please. Oh, your audio is a little funny, can you try that again?
I don't know.
Nope, we can't hear you. If you want to type it in the chat, I can read it, okay.
What I barely heard him say was, somebody asked if I was still on, and so I turned on my, yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
Well, I would move that the Board of Commissioners support the widening of US Highway twenty in Senate Bill five sixty-four.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Before we move on, just, are any of the three of us available at five to read the letter? Because that's, that's when the hearing is tonight.
Oh, I do not believe so. I am not, I don't think. Neither do you.
I had a plan, I can potentially move it if we need, if we need somebody, I mean, it could just also be written.
Yeah, it's, it's really your call. I think, you know, CFM, it's just, if you're compelled and you want to represent it, you can, but a letter is fine as well. There'll probably be lots of people signing up for their three minutes.
Okay. I'll also just say that you should read the other letter that's been submitted, it's a good, it's a fun read. It's interesting.
Thank you for the note.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess if either one of you wanted to do that, coordinate with.
Rick, yeah, just so, you know, if that is something you're interested in, and I just connect you with CFM, they'll be there to, to support you if that's something you want to do. I mean, obviously do it online, so.
Okay.
Okay.
But they, but they could probably be there to get you signed up.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, county updates, first up, Rachel McMenney, our county administrator.
Sure, and I, you know, again, hopefully, since we have now an assistant county administrator as well, but if Rick has any updates after me, I'd like to make that available to him, so he's got a few minutes to look at his calendar of the last few weeks. Some recent county activities at note, I attended the CFM federal and state check-in meetings. We attended our legislative breakfast. I took a ride down and worked with our county administrator to the south, Steve Markowski, who's been a good friend and colleague, and we share a lot of ideas of what's going on in lane and lane, and, as well as some of my other county administrators, sharing problems, issues that we see, trends that are happening. I also, something that I'm very committed to is I've met with the local two oh six two AFSCME leadership to try to, it was kind of a commitment to work a little bit closer together. So we had kind of a one-on-one, and then also, I am working on attending the labor management meetings. Biggest focus right now is operationalizing the Crisis Center. So we're going through some new work rules, it's a twenty-four-hour center, you know, facility, so there are some work rules that we're working through, and I'm happy to report that it's going well. I also attended the Benton Believes kickoff meeting, which is the comp plan, which many of you did. And really, and I also, going back to the Crisis Center, met with Stacy Yulcy, who is our new project manager. She's a contractor who's going to help us operationalize the Crisis Center, do some hiring. I'm pretty excited about Stacy. She comes with a pretty strong background from the State Police Academy. So there's a, because we are having such a shift into almost forty folks who are going to be behavioral health specialists, qualified behavioral health specialists, we're trying to come up with some unique ideas to recruit those type of workers. And I've also asked, asked me to help join that recruitment effort as well. So a lot of that is that laser focus on the Crisis Center and what we're working on. Another thing that's a real heavy focus is, is as you all know, whether it's got, dropped significantly, this is one of the longest cold periods that we have had. So we have been doing a lot of cold weather shelter coordination, that we have a daily call every day at noon, as well as even on the weekends, where we started out at the library, and now we have moved our low-barrier population to the fairgrounds. We have a contract with Faith, Hope, and Charity to do this type of work, and I, I don't know how else to explain it to you, but there's a burnout, right? This is, this is hard work, and this is a much longer period of time that we've been had this issue. So I want to thank our county workforce who have volunteered to take shifts. Those are both representative and non-representative. This is also a twenty-four-hour run sheltering situation that's going on, facilities, the work that Brian Lee has done to coordinate it, and our amazing health department. I just want to thank a lot of the, the folks who have signed up for four in the morning shifts. I was over at the library on Sunday night, and then we've also transitioned over to the campground. It is, it is going fairly smoothly. Sometimes it's just about eight people, and then sometimes it's jumped up to about fifteen folks. These are folks that we cannot put in hotels and motels. So that is something that is a daily in the life of the county administrator in the county right now. But I'm really proud of this county that, that we are stepping up and helping in a situation like that. And I want to thank the city as well for the use of the library for a few days. I also met with Jessica Hugan, who is the executive director of the Benton County Historical Society. I know they've had an additional ask for this year that you will be addressing later on towards the biannual, and she kind of updated me on some of their new events and outreach. And also, I attended the Samaritan Awards with my colleagues here at the table over in Flometh, and had a great time. Some upcoming meetings, I, it's a Valley City Manager and County Administrator Lunch, that's at the COG over at Albany. We have VOC Corvallis Leadership Meeting with Chair Wise. We have the NACA Oregon Meetings that we are all very focused on as well, tracking our federal frees and federal cuts. And just a reminder that it's President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth, and county offices will be closed. And I am open here to talk to you. Once again, I talked about earlier, we are in budget planning and process meeting with the departments, and a focus that was very important to you all here was a climate and an equity goal. Those are still embedded into the departments, so we'll be looking at that as we move forward. And other things I'm working on is in paneling a federal policy group. Some of it's about policies and potential cuts and the frees, but also communication, how we're going to communicate to our community, how we're going to continue to communicate to our workforce signage, how, how we're going to be continuing to reach out to our immigrant communities. And as April and Rosio said, meet the community where they are, that we are very committed to providing the services that we provide. So it's, it's a hard time right now, a little bit, and I, this is the time to lean into this work. And, you know, I look forward to your leadership and collaboration as we, we try to get through this with decision-making.
Thank you.
Once again, another heavy update.
Questions for Karen Minister?
Thank you, Rick. And just to add a couple of things, first, this is just really more like, just confirming with the three of you. So as you all know, you approved your two thousand twenty-five state legislative priorities some time back. One of those priorities was specific to particularly rural water and sewer infrastructure. CFM is preparing a, a letter in support of all of its clients that just really encourages the legislative continued support for water and, and water infrastructure primarily. We all know that there's a lot of discussion around that at the legislative, in, in the legislative conversations right now. And we've been asked to add our logo to that. The City of Adair is actually adding their logo because of the Adair wastewater treatment project. And so I wanted to just double-check with you to make sure you're okay with doing that, and by the fact that you have supported this kind of broadly from an infrastructure standpoint. I wasn't bringing anything forward, but I certainly can do that if you would prefer. But I also just trying to be efficient with everybody's time, so I guess just a confirming with all three of you, you're good.
That's fine with me.
Beautiful, thank you.
Sounds good.
Great, and like I said, the City of Adair has already provided their logo, so ours will go right there next to them. And obviously, still lots of conversations about that particular project. I know it came up during the legislative breakfast, which is a good segue. We are getting it set for our next legislative breakfast, which is scheduled for March eighth, Saturday, March eighth, nine AM start time, as, as we've had in the past or in the previous. This will be the first one where we're in partnership with the League of Women's Voters. They will be following right after. Thank you to Commissioner Wise for her help and support on trying to make a few minor little adjustments to the entire event that will enable us to finish everything by noon, which was one of the special requests that had come through, but will not interfere with our start time. We will, though, provide the doors to open a little bit earlier, just in case people want to come early and have breakfast. And we want to be able to get the meeting started right at nine o'clock, because we are going to have a time crunch in terms of getting through our portion of the agenda. And then we only have fifteen minutes to turn the table, turn the tables around. We will be having breakfast this time in the lobby area, as opposed to here, because that is one of the things that prevents us from really being able to, to get a quick turnaround time. So fifteen minutes, we're going to have staff really scrambling, but thank you very much for your support.
We're going to shave fifteen minutes off the end of our meeting.
And fifteen minutes off the end of our meeting, which means we have to be even very more crisp in terms of the message. So it's been confirmed that everyone feels good about that, and like I said, thanks, Commissioner Wise, for a lot of work on that.
So the league, town all starts at ten thirty?
Let's see, got to get this right, nine, ten, ten fifteen. Yeah, it's going to be nine to ten, fifteen-minute breakdown, flip it around, because we'll, and see, we'll obviously ask people to move out to the lobby area if they wish to continue to talk, and then we'll get the, get everything set up, so.
Or I'll be like, we're adjourned, and then you two stand up, and you two are like, come on, come on, let's go.
I mean, I'm happy to hurt people out.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Well, that probably wouldn't be worth an announcement at the beginning here's, because it's a little bit of a change, and it's completely different from our February meeting, where the breakfast was the only thing on the agenda.
And I have drafted a message, I'm running it by Connie at the League of Women Voters, I want to make sure she's, she's good- I want to make sure she's, she's good with the messages, but that'll go out to our invite list just to let them know that, reaffirming that we're still nine, but that doors will open earlier and there'll be a little bit of adjustments to the tighter schedule. Real quickly, things moving along nicely on the Community Development Director recruitment. Thank you all for, again, being willing to participate in that process. We are still slated for first round interviews on February 24th. So Rachel and I will probably do some initial screening on the applications when we close. I will not be participating in the first round, but then everybody will be participating in the second. So, so far, so good. I think we're getting a good response.
How many candidates?
At this point, I think that there has been, I'm going to say nine that, but we haven't closed yet. But those, of course, we still have to.
We've missed the qualification.
At the qualification.
Yeah.
Last thing I'll share is obviously lots of conversations about the federal government and executive orders and do they, are they the law? Do we need to comply? So you all heard Vance last week do a really good job of sort of talking about the executive orders and how they're treated in the eyes of, of the law. We had a bit of a surprise though, after that, when we learned that some of our new ODOT agreements actually spell out that compliance with executive orders. That was a bit of a surprise to many of us and changed our thinking a little bit in terms of, okay, you know, what should we be considering in this? I think it's really, really, you know, it's clear that nobody has a lot of great answers at this point. We've reached out to the governor's office, we've reached out to two various state agencies. Lacey and Christine just got back from DC where they spent a lot of time with HERSA and other federal agencies. The message really is, at this point, that there is no specific changes that are being directed. These executive orders, as you know, are directed towards federal agencies. Those federal agencies have to implement those executive orders. And so we are reliant, if we are getting money in, in the case of the health, the CHC directly from HRSA, we're reliant on them to give us the specific directions of what it means to implement that executive order. You know, we're also reliant on state agencies who are the direct recipient of these federal funds, not us, to once again pass that through. Oregon Health Authority released a message on Friday that basically said, business as usual at this point. They did not, you know, again, they said they're watching carefully, like we all are, to see what changes are, are being, I guess, implemented, particularly by the, the federal agencies. We've had some, a few questions already come through about do we hold up on signing certain agreements, which means that we would be holding up on actual provisions of services. I think in conversations with, with the council, I, I think there, obviously there's always a concern and there's a risk, but I think it's a minimal type of risk at this point because we have zero clarity from either the organizations in terms of what we should be doing. If anything, it's basically keep doing what you, what you, what you have been doing. And so I would be reluctant to come to you and say, we should start holding all agreements and, and stopping services for certain things based on this. But it is a watch and see. We need to be very paying really, really close attention. We have Michael Skipper on the ground in DC trying to find out as much as he can from the, the various federal agencies. But that's really kind of the stance we would like to be able to continue to take. We've talked to Vance, he's, he concurs. Again, he's, Vance would of course, if he was sitting here saying, yeah, there is always going to be that potential risk, but I think it's, it can be mitigated. And certainly if, you know, the risk is clawback, which is, you know, you continue to do the things that you do and then a federal agency comes in and says, hey, there's this rule that was in place, you're spending money in conflict of that, we're going to try to clawback. Of course, we would, we would sue. That, that would be the typical, the response because again, there is no clarity is in relation to any particular guidance of, of these things. As for those that have read through these EO's, they can be very vague in, in many places. So, so yeah, that's, again, I, I know it's not perfect, but it's, it's kind of where we're at, at this point. Have not heard back from the governor's office yet. They were checking in to see what responses other state agencies are giving. So any questions on that, concerns, thoughts?
Concerns.
Suggestions? Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Oh. Thus far, there hasn't been any interruption in funding.
Well, I'm signing things. I mean, we are approving some purchasing and some grants that we've been awarded.
Yeah.
To, to, because we have, we have to run some operations, we have to.
Yeah. The biggest risk area that we had was HERSA, which is our federal money that funds the CHC. We drew it all. So we were one of the, the departments or entities that got in and we've drawn down all of that money. So it's in our bank accounts. Obviously can't control the state agencies and what they have access to, but so far there's been no disruption in terms of dollars.
Well, and that, that's the, I think the good advice, and I've heard various places, is a lot of noise going on here, what, what's actually taking place? And I can appreciate that it can be hard to differentiate the, the noise from the, the actual results or policies that are being implemented.
I know, you know, you heard Lacey talked about when she was in DC last week, I think things were changing like in the moment. And they, HERSA had originally come out with specific guidance that we were to implement and then they pulled it back to say it wasn't immediate. Then they pulled it completely. So it's, and that all resulted because of a lawsuit that was put forward in relation to gender affirming. So it, there's going to be a lot of this going forward where things are going to be tested in the court system. And I think it's just, we have to be on alert and be ready to respond and.
So question, I'm, I'm trying to juggle all this in my head and think about it at the same time. With the state grants that have that wording?
Yeah.
They have, is, that wording have to be in there based on?
It, it looks to me like it's standard boilerplate because law enforcement pulled some of their agreements and they had that in there. The key word though is applicable.
Okay.
So what's applicable?
Right. Do you know if the state would be amenable or able to just remove that from there?
Those things out. That's the question that we have in front. Help, we, we've, I need to fall back before, we'll see if we've heard anything more back from ODOT. But that is where we're going to probably be pushing the governor's office to say, listen, you know, these, these are, this is what it says.
I think that would be the best case scenario if we can get the governor's office to do that, that we wouldn't have to worry as much.
And, and a lot of that really, you know, I think should also be aimed at the DOJ. Because all, I know all these agreements, these are boilerplates that come, all state agencies, that's their attorney is the DOJ. So it's the general counsel of the DOJ that is making those boilerplate language. Now, the other thing is clarifying what is applicable. So when you say applicable executive orders, I mean, applicable to me is that executive order that's been given and that stated, on that state, excuse me, that federal agency and they have actually implemented it. They've actually put in rules and regulations in relation response to that. We don't have any of that. Nothing from these federal agencies in terms of what they're doing other than a presidential signed EO that tells them to do something.
Well, I think legislation that passes, I mean, and it's gone, gone through a fairly thorough process to get the wording right and, and it takes, depending on how complex, a year of rulemaking and administrative scrutiny and well, this is what, what the law really means. And, and these executive orders are so vague, so many of them, that.
Or have the federal agency actually interpret it and figure out exactly how they're going to implement it.
And that can't be done in a day or two or?
Not typically.
I mean, especially when, I mean, you're talking about billions of dollars and, and yes, you can do this or, I, I guess I, I would hope that we would try to stay the course and take care of business and get clarification from ODOT or the governor's office or DOJ. I mean, I think the good news is we're, obviously we're not the only ones being affected. This is everybody in the country and for roads or health or.
With the City of Corvallis CFO yesterday, and they're kind of going through the same type of thing, they're trying to figure out, you know, how best to respond to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to, I think it's important to take care of business, let the lawyers figure out what, what, what things mean, but we can't afford to get confused and not, not take care of business.
Other comments, questions?
I just have a time-sensitive update that I wanted to give.
Sure.
I just wanted, Councilor Cadena has been, he's, needs to head out, but I wanted to thank him for coming and the Corvallis City Council, when I went and presented to them that I was their liaison, said we would like a liaison to the county. And Councilor Cadena was appointed that liaison and he came today to, to watch the meeting. He told me he's got, got to head out before the meeting ends, but I wanted to draw, draw attention to, to his presence here and thank him, thank him for coming and, you know, offer him to meet with you guys, you know, he can, offer him. But yeah, he, he's going to be the city, they appointed him and voted on all that stuff. So he's the, their liaison to the county. So that they are also excited and interested in building a very strong relationship with this over the next two years, especially just about housing and various things. So I wanted to thank him for making the trip out today.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. I look forward to that. Gabe and I have worked together before.
Do you want to come up to, sorry, do you want to come up to the table so that people online can hear you? Thank you, Councilor Cadena.
Yes, thank you. Gabe and I have already met once and will be kind of just talking about various topics of overlap. I look forward, I'm not going to be making every county meeting, but I plan to come as often as I can and really looking forward to, to ring with you. I will be setting up some time to meet with you individually as well.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
The, the agenda comes out Thursday or Friday before the Tuesday meeting, Wednesday and that, see what kind of overlap there is between what we're talking about and what the city is up to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Gabe. Commissioner Shepherd.
All right. Rick, did you have anything else? Okay. That brings us to Commissioner updates. Who would like to go first?
I can go whenever you would like.
Go for it.
Okay. Welcome, Councilor Cadena. Set off. Had the opportunity at AOC Day yesterday in Salem to speak with some representatives about some of our priorities, which was great. It was a, it was a great networking opportunity in general, but I also had a conversation with Representative Dial Deal, D-I-E-H-L, about some of his health-related bills, which he is sponsoring a slate of health-related bills that create interstate compacts between, between California, Washington and Oregon, saying if you're qualified to operate in one place, you're qualified to operate in all of them. That is for, that, one of, the, the bills do not cover QMHPs. So I brought that up and he hadn't thought about that. So he and his chief of staff, who also seems to be his wife, were there. And I was able to pitch that to both of them. They seemed interested in at least pursuing the idea of following up. The rest of that slate of bills doesn't take, wouldn't take effect until 28 if passed. So it wouldn't help us, you know, if, if they add that one in, it wouldn't help us until a while out. But he had not thought of that. And yeah, I, I have some comments. There, there are other people standing around who seem to believe that it was a lost cause, but I'll leave those comments for afterwards because I think it's worth, I mean, it's worth working with them. He seemed interested in, in actually adding that in and, and doing something with it, which is great. So I met, finished my meetings with department heads. I've met all the department heads and I'm looking to start facility tours of places I don't go to recently. Just an FYI for people. So that's going to be on the list of things to do. Filing is open for the May 20th election. It opened yesterday. I hear that all of the incumbent Corvallis School Board members came in together and filed and I'm, I, I'm a big nerd about all this stuff, so I'm going to keep checking in and see who's filed and who hasn't. So just letting people know that the filing closes March 20th. Corvallis, okay, Corvallis Game Con is this weekend. I will be running two DMD sessions. So if that's a thing that people are interested in, it's at the, at the C3, the Corvallis Community Center. And it's, it's a fun time. There's a cost to enter, but after you pay to enter, sessions are free. I will be playing DMD with strangers. And the last thing I have is a question for staff. I had written down on notes preparing myself for this meeting that there was a, potentially a conversation about the Housing Subcommittee and wondering if that's been moved or where that's been moved to and all that.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, so what, we have moved the tack, or excuse, we have moved the Housing Subcommittee discussion to the goal setting in April.
Oh, okay.
To better align with the budgetary discussions. But we also know that it doesn't prevent us from continuing to do the work we have been, particularly like with Adair Village and trying to convene the employers. So we can still move. It just gives us a little bit more time and aligns us more closely with the budget since they kind of go hand in hand.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, that answers the question. I actually remembered I did have one more thing. I attended the Corvallis Rural Fire Protection District meeting. I'm on a fire protection district vendor. And my, the reason I might not be able to give testimony tonight is I'm planning on going to the Adair Rural Fire Protection District meeting because I'm trying to meet and connect with all of these different smaller, small district boards that, that are out there. So just letting people know that that's something that I'm doing right now. All right, I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah. Middle of last month, I had a meeting with Attorney General Ray Field and the, the good news is he's still paying attention to what's going on in our area, even though he now has statewide responsibilities. And I'm hopeful that'll continue. I mean, he, he lives here, he's represented this area for better part of a decade and I'm not exactly sure how his new job and, and helping Benton County and Corvallis fits in, but I, I know he, he and his staff have worked with Sarah Finger McDonald and tried to show her the legislative ropes on how to get a bill started and hopefully through the process. I think it's been mentioned, she is, she wanted to be on the House Ag Committee and was appointed there and is vice chair, which is unusual for a freshman to have that position. and is Vice Chair, which is unusual for a freshman to have that position. But I think the other members of the committee recognized her extensive background and what, what she brings to the table. So I think we are well-served and need to keep meeting with her and letting, letting her know what, what our needs are and end of last month, like Sean mentioned, there was the SMNB physical meeting in Salem. Pretty good turnout. I was a little disappointed. I think I was the only elected there. Mr. Cameron from Marion County is invested in this process, but their board meeting was that morning, and so he wasn't there. Just, well, like earlier today, we talked about what Pope County is up to and I think Mr. Pope is the Pope County Rep and he was, he was not there. I don't think he was on line either, but we'll keep working on that because this really is a regional process question and the more people that show up and contribute, I think the, the better the final project will will be. Had a Umpac meeting, Oregon MPOs. So there's, I believe, six. We have two in our area, the Corvallis MPO and Albany. For the rest of this year, I'm the Chair of that group. We, we used to have real meetings where you would go to Bend or there's a Roseburg and also Medford area, MPO and, but since COVID, most of our meetings have been virtual. And I'm hoping to have at least one meeting maybe in the, in the summer would be in person. And I think somebody figured out it was either, yeah, it must have been Corvallis. Corvallis' turn to host if we have a in-person meeting. Legislative breakfast has already been mentioned. I think that's a great tradition and it was made a full day with, meeting with Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Val Hoyle in, in Philomath. And I, I think Senator Merkley finally told the audiences, this is unusual. Don't, that Oregon may be the only place where you can go to a meeting and see your senators without having to pay $500 for a bad chicken dinner. And it, it really is something special and takes a lot of time. They're, both Senator Wyden and Merkley are committed to having a town hall in every county every year. They are to be applauded for that effort.
Good to see Congresswoman Hoyle there also.
Yep. Now, speaking of her, I've almost had her visiting Jackson Fraser early yesterday. It was, I forget what, within a couple of weeks, oh, the 21st. And then another text came in and said, never mind, maybe next time. So we're trying to get her to actually visit Jackson Fraser to reinforce the ask we're making her for funding to finish the, the boardwalk there.
We did that last year with the other two commissioners and I think that they would all love to participate in the, the walk around the boardwalk. So yeah, please, let's keep that in mind.
Do we have a conversation about making a video of that?
Already exists, of, of Jackson Fraser.
With our current asks and?
Yeah, it's a good question if it's updated to what we've received and, because we have had a lot of donations, which has been really helpful.
It's a three-minute video. Jesse Otten, some other folks, very well done. So I have tried to pass that around. So, and then that, that goes along with the ask. This is why we, we need this.
Yeah, at the very least, if they can't make it out, then they can see that.
Yeah.
Or maybe seeing that will convince them to come see in person.
That was strongly recommended to try to get Val there. Would help solidify the resupportive project. Noticed yesterday in Gomburg's weekly newsletter, he had a long list of projects. And one of them was $600,000 for, to reopen the Alcey Clinic. I have some concerns about that, that there's a a splitter group in Alcey that's pushing this and, but I don't think they have any idea how to get providers. And I, talking with Lacey, Benton County is not going to step into that. So it's, it sounds good on paper. Oh, here's some money, reopen the clinic. And but we've, it's closed for a reason, that there just wasn't very difficult to get providers. There wasn't a lot of need for a full-on clinic. So I'm not quite sure what to do on that one. And I think Rep Gomburg has had some information that the main project in Alcey this year is the upgrading of the school to make that a emergency center. And it's a $20 million Department of Ag grant that they're working on getting. And I think part of the idea is this is a big deal and should be the focus of the Alcey community for the, for this season. So at the AOC meet and greet yesterday, I talked to the head of the State Emergency Management Department. And Brian Lee is well thought of as an excellent emergency management person. And that's not the first time I've heard that, but he and his helpers, I think, do a great job for us and that. His efforts should be recognized. And we appreciate how hard, how hard he works and what a, what a good job he does.
Well, he won an award, right? Or two awards this year?
Two, says the sheriff.
So I'm going to just wing it here from memory. One was an Oregon State Sheriff's Association Award, perhaps? And the other one I'm blanking on.
No?
Can't hear you. No. I, I remember seeing it on the, on the sheriff's Facebook page that they run, so.
And, and Brian is very humble too. So it's, it's, he's a, he's a unique public servant and yeah, I've just, he has been a really big help with this emergency sheltering. So there's so much to emergency manager now. Oh, there's.
O S A and State.
State of Oregon, yep.
Well deserved. I also had a nice talk with the AOC Executive Director, Gina Nichols. And she has a background in rental health, health providers and very interested in our crisis center and would love to have a tour. I can see us having several grand openings or celebrations of this facility. It's my understanding, once the building's finished, there, there will be at least a couple of months where it's not in operation, where we could do kind of grand opening type tours. And I think this is a, a facility that needs celebrating.
Hands on it.
Put her, put Gina Nichols on the list. Very, very interested.
Gina Nichols?
Yeah, AOC. And Tobias Reed is going to be in the building tomorrow morning.
Is that public information or?
Yeah, he, he's coming to talk to James Morales on a couple of bills.
You're good.
So we have a statewide celebrity in the building. I think, I didn't look forward. Yeah, that's probably enough.
All right. Well, most of the stuff that I was thinking about, others have already mentioned, which is why I like to go last. Have to talk as much. Let's see, I know, so the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet is next Saturday at 5:00 PM, I believe, and you are going?
Yes, I, I purchased my ticket.
Okay. I'm still not sure if I'm going to go, but perhaps if we, if we need to, staff could mention a potential quorum of commissioners on that day, which?
The 15th?
Let's see. It is?
It is not the 15th. It is the 20th.
Second.
Uh, yes, Saturday, the 22nd. I haven't started it till 5:00 PM on my calendar.
Yeah.
Till 9:00 or, yeah. So we'll see if I can make it to that or not. As was mentioned, I think the National Association of Counties Legislative, Legislative Conference is coming up in November. So I'll be attending that. So I'll be at the office February 28th and returning, I think, in the evening of Wednesday, March 5th. Looking forward to that. The other thing I'll mention, the Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee meeting is coming up on Friday, the 21st at 10:00 AM. I have a, I try to sit on those, even though I'm not a voting member, but just for our board, I'm the person that tries to follow that. I might have a conflict, but I'll see what I can do to be able to attend that meeting at least virtually. And I believe that is everything that I have. So is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a couple of things I missed. March 7th, it's turned into, well, this is the annual Benton County Forest Land Review Committee. That's not quite right. Every property outside of Corvallis is, that the Oregon Department of Forestry protects, has an assessment and 15 years ago, it had, the assessments were out of date and kind of random. So this committee was formed to make sure that the people with trees, not necessarily forest or timber owners, were included in the Protection District. So now, some heavy lifting was done early on and now it's just a brief review and not, not many changes. An example of a change would be if there was a development that used to be farm or forest and now is houses. Well, they don't, they, they probably wouldn't need to be in the Protection. Rarely happens, so it's, it's pretty routine. And I'd forgotten about Naco and Legislative. I decided not to go this year. Partly because my colleagues are going, is I correct?
Yes.
And I, I've been once and just for financial reasons, I don't think it's, would be a good use of county money or my time to go. I'm hoping that, and this came from our federal lobbyist, Michael Oleskaper of that as far as lobbying for Benton County projects, this really isn't a good time because there are, it may not be a majority of Oregon commissioners there at the same time, but a significant number that are making the rounds. And sometime in the congressional calendar, late March, April, might be a better time to go back and actually just do lobbying type efforts for Benton County projects. And with the uncertainty on the, at the federal level, I think having a little more time, hopefully we'll have some clarity what the federal government is up to and how that affects Benton County, so.
Yeah. Thank you for that reminder. That's another thing I could have reported on is, we did talk about that as with CFM having the chair go another time, separate. And so my flight and hotel were booked for that. So I'll be doing that, March, I think, 23rd through the 26th.
Yes.
And you will be joining as well.
Great.
So am I going?
Are you going?
I think for, for me, I'd think that it would be like, the opportunity for everyone to go would be the Naco Conference. And then if we do have lobbying that we need to have happen, you know, it, I think it makes most sense to have the chair go because we don't want to keep sending people, you know, it's a lot of money to, to, to go over and be there for a long time. And, and afford that, but like the, the Naco Conference, I think, is the opportunity for all of us to go. And then if we need something done, I think it's the chair's responsibility to do it. That would be my interpretation.
That's sort of what I was thinking, but maybe we haven't had a full conversation about that.
We haven't had any conversation about. I mean, as far as I know.
Well, I'd heard, and this came to me from staff, that because of, you know, it was what CFM's recommendation that we have a second.
Yes.
it was what CFM's recommendation that we have a second go of it?
Yes, CFM recommended that we don't do it around the NACO conference because we can't get our focus.
Okay.
I mean, we could all go again, all through, like if we were, if more than one of us was going to go, then I'd want to offer it to everybody. But does it make sense to have all three of us go or two of us go? I mean, I'm trying to think of like cost benefit. It is a cost of the county. Is it more effective if more than one of us go? Or is it equally effective, but it costs more?
I can certainly do a cost analysis and we can discuss further if we want. I mean, we took advantage yesterday to be up at the House to Salem to talk about Benton County priorities. You know, so I don't, you know, want, it's everybody's, you know, we got to share the priority.
Yeah, I mean, while that's true that I was in Salem, that's a $50, maybe $20 reimbursement for gas versus a couple thousand dollars for flights and hotels and all those things. So like being cognizant of that, I will say I was aware of a Yen Hill County Commission meeting recently where they just had a whole conversation. They didn't even want to fund anybody going to DC, at least the majority of their board didn't. So I think that level of cost is something that we should, we should have a discussion about. If I'm, I am innately comfortable with the chair going. If we want to go, I think that's a conversation we need to have as a board about funding, funding that level of, that level of travel. Because that's, it's a lot to go to DC and lobbying, especially when we have paid lobbyists to be in DC and do that for us. So.
I guess I worded the idea that the chair would go, come from?
I just, I don't know. So if CFM, my recollection is CFM asked, I think we had, we talked about this during some of the meetings where they were here.
Yeah, I mean, I...
So sorry, I just, whoever, in my mind, whoever is the chair is like the go-to person to represent. So if either one of you were the chair, then you would go, maybe next year if we do this, your chair, you would go. So that's how I think of it. You know, if the chair can't go, then the next, you know, person would be the vice chair, et cetera. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I was just, I was just going to say, yes, it was very clear that a much more focused time. And we thought, you know, is it the commissioner or is it, right? Right? It doesn't make sense for both regions to go either. So one of us to accompany, to have also sort of the background on more of the projects specific. So that was recommended that, you know, having a staff person and a commissioner. Now, Mike, of course, is going to make any recommendation in terms of who goes. But obviously that becomes your guy's decision. I will say just from a cost standpoint, similar to a commissioner's shepherd, I mean, we don't budget a lot of our state travel. So I mean, I think we do need to be cognizant of how much we are spending on that because, you know, we do have the NACO conference we go to. And while the budget has been, you know, good, we also want to stay good. So that would be the one thing I would just put out there for us to be really thoughtful about the budget itself and perception.
And whenever we have something that the county should be represented at, my instinct is whoever's chair has first pass at it. And then if they can't go, likely goes to the vice chair. And if they can't go, hey, guess what? The newbie, the newbie gets it. But like unless it's in somebody's particular, what have we been calling it? Portfolio type thing? But like this, what I vision as the chair's role is, you know, coming from a city background, and I know we're not a city, but like they're, they are the spokesperson. They're the mayor for the year. And they get to go to things that like, the mayor got invited to go see Val Hoyle, and I didn't. The mayor got invited to go to OSU games by the president, even though I represented campus. Little sore spot there. But, and I didn't, and I view that as the chair. And we are in a position where we rotate chairs, which I think is great because sometimes you get a lifetime appointment to chair and nobody else gets to do anything. But, you know, I think year after year, as that rotates, you know, I, the chair is the voice of the county for that calendar year. They get to do things, cool things that I don't get to do, so.
And what are the dates?
The 23rd, March 23rd through the 26th. Let me double check the calendar.
You're correct.
Flights are really, they either leave like at 5:00 AM and get there at, yeah, in the evening, like late at evening, or they leave in the evening and get there at 5:00 AM. So that's why the travel date on a Sunday. Yeah. And then I actually, just FYI, I'll be, that's also spring break. So the next day when I get back, I will be out of the office for those next two days with my kids doing something. So I'll be out of the office from the 24th through the 28th of March.
I'll also be at the office that week, chair.
Good thing we have a vice chair and a county, an assistant county.
Last time we were at the Washington DC event, there were some things that had signature that we needed to close on.
That's true.
So that was, it was the one to stay behind last year as well, and that helped a lot. So it's nice to have a commissioner behind, too.
Leave a commissioner behind.
Well.
I get, I get it, but it's...
Cost was mentioned, and I think there should be some expectation of a report or, you know, what, what good did you do? Like I said, it's a significant cost. And what's the county getting out of that? And do we do it again next year or do things differently or?
Well, this year with the, all the federal freezes and executive orders, I mean, I had asked, are we even still doing it? Is it still worthwhile to do?
Yeah.
And I think Michael Skipper said...
Yes, definitely. And I think again, things, hopefully dust will start to settle a little bit. And maybe this is an opportunity to gain some clarity from, because we're going to be talking directly to federal agencies. That's one of the big opportunities here. And to find out, you know, okay, directly from horse's mouth, exactly what is the direction for your federal agency? So I think that's a great opportunity just in itself, let alone talking about some of the priority areas that we have. And then, of course, meeting with our congressional delegation.
And I know NACO does other events or any of those on our calendars?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the Western Interstate Conference. That's usually the one, right? I know Zan sometimes tried to go to the annual conference. Since I usually go to the Western one, I don't need to go to all the conferences. Like it's okay if we divide and conquer, you know? Those are up for, either both of you is interested in the...
Question, the annual conference, is that the one in Philadelphia? Is that, okay. I was informed that one, that Commissioner Schrader from Clackamas County is running for second vice president and the list of things. So, yeah. And I had some people tell me that they were going to be going to that to support her. So I'm just letting, letting you know that that's a thing that's happening.
It's nice to actually know someone who's throwing their hat in the ring.
Yeah.
And I am planning on attending the national conference in Philly in July, I believe.
And I saw it was in Philadelphia. I'm like, it's close to Pittsburgh and Super Bowl, but you know. But I go to conferences.
Not, not for Super Bowl, for Nancy. Sorry, Commissioner Wise, she's got a different team on her.
That's, yeah, no, that's, yeah. So if either of you, there's that one. And then obviously the AOC one in November that we all usually attend is, in my opinion, meaningful, not just for the educational components, but for the networking and establishing and building relationships with our fellow county commissioners. Those relationships do make disagreements in, you know, steering committees and legislative committees more tenable sometimes, maybe not all the time, but sometimes. Okay, are we, is there anything else on that topic? Because I have one other thing I wanted to, okay. Just a process question. So we did add, this item that we added to the agenda today. Did we already put this in the packet or will this, is there's a staff report and a letter? Or how do we, what are we doing to attach this to public stuff? Okay, so it'll be an exhibit to the current packet. Thank you. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order?
No, your transition for Civic Plus this month, so it's going to look different. All right, well, Civic Plus will be different soon. Probably the next goal setting, you'll see it.